Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, our summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Good evening. I'd like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, November 20th, 2023. It is now 6:00 PM. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to put the board into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, firefighters' union.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call, please.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zalinski, aye.
Taylor, aye. We will return to public session at 6:30. I'd like to open the public session of the Select Board meeting. It is Monday, November 20th, at 6:30 PM. And the Select Board just returned from executive session where we came to an agreement with the firefighters' union. As we open this meeting, I would ask that you please silence your cell phones. And if anyone in the audience is making a video or audio recording of this public meeting, please notify me as the chair. Okay, I would ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have a proclamation tonight. It is for the Falmouth Peer Recovery Support Center. It has a grand opening on December 1st, and I would be happy to read the proclamation. Is anyone here from the Gondara Center? Oh, awesome. Great. Welcome. Proclamation. Whereas the mission of the Falmouth Commission on Substance Use is to prevent substance use among Falmouth citizens, provide information and education to the community, and promote the development and availability of a continuum of substance use services for all residents, and whereas the Falmouth Peer Recovery Support Center welcomes all people in recovery from substance misuse and those affected by substance misuse, offering a variety of free services and providing peer-to-peer supports, including peer facilitated groups, relapse prevention, and tobacco cessation support groups, social events, access to computers for job readiness and job search activities, and advocacy and recovery coaching. And whereas the Falmouth Peer Recovery Support Center commitments are to respect and promote the human and civil rights of all individuals we serve. And whereas the Falmouth Peer Recovery Support Center provides the highest quality of services, assures continuous improvement, and fully values the diversity of individuals as well as meeting the changing needs of individuals we serve. And whereas to help achieve this goal, the Department of Public Health, the Bureau of Substance Addiction Services, the Gondara Mental Health Center, and the Falmouth Peer Recovery Support Center invite all residents of the town of Falmouth to recognize the Gondara Center's new and sixth recovery support center in the Commonwealth. Now therefore, we, Nancy Robins Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Angelae Scott Price, and Robert Mascali, as the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth by virtue of the authority vested in us by the laws of the United States, do hereby proclaim December 1st as the Falmouth Peer Recovery Support Center grand opening day in Falmouth and call upon the people of Falmouth to observe this day. In witness thereof, we hereunto have set our hands and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed this day, Monday, November 20th, 2023. Congratulations and thank you for your work. Mr. Brown?
Could we have the gentleman tell us where it is and?
Oh, certainly. Yes. If you'd like to come up and introduce yourself. It's in Kenyon's, it's a Kenyon's Corner, right in there. But if he would like to tell us any more about it, that would be great.
Hello, my name's A.J. Wilson. I'm the new director at the Falmouth Recovery Center. I was previous assistant director at the one in Hyannis. So what we are, she explained a lot of it, but the main thing is to have a safe place for people in recovery to go. So we have a lot of people that come to Cape Cod and they come for treatment and then they end up staying and then they end up roaming around, don't have nowhere to go, and get themselves back in trouble. So we can be a safe place for them to come. We'll help them find jobs, we'll help them find housing. We have, we've worked with the Housing Authority, we work with a lot of people. To have a safe place for them to come and then we can help them get on their feet and get to work and getting to doing the things that they need to do. We also have support for family members and we'll have different types of groups and meetings. How it's ran is us as staff, we go in, we oversee the day-to-day, but the people in the community that come and become members, they're the ones that actually run the center. So they come up with the ideas of what groups are good there, what meetings will be good, do we want a grievance support group, things like that. And then it will come to my table after it goes to advisory board and then we'll make a final decision on groups, meetings, and anything that happens there. We've had great success with these. We haven't had any really big issues with any of the recovery centers with like overdoses, with like violence or nothing like that. It's been really smooth sailing since they opened up. So I'm really excited to have it in Falmouth in my own, you know, town. I live in Falmouth myself. And I'm very excited to have it here because I was doing it in Hyannis a lot and it was a lot more of an unhoused population and it was, you know, it was kind of hard to work there with that population, but we did the best we could. Here, we have a huge recovery population in Falmouth. And now we can provide a safe place. It was the one missing piece to the puzzle. We had all the recovery houses, we have the treatment centers, but what do they do when they get out of detox and you just send them to a recovery house and they're sitting there with idle time doing nothing? Right. Now they have a safe place to go. They can come and we'll help them get jobs. After volunteering at our center for a while, they can get stipend positions so they can start answering the phone, showing people the center, working on our social media, and we'll pay them. So some people that just get like social security, can't work full-time, they can work at our center a few hours a week and we pay them every month. So it's things like that. It's been really successful and we see a lot of good things happening and I see it being really good for the future of Falmouth to have this place for everyone. It's open for the town too. It's not like just for this group of people, it's open for everybody. So if someone from the town comes in and says, hey, I want to have a meeting here at this time, a night, like, we plan on having a drop-in night like Yarmouth has their Yisak drop-in night? So eventually we'll have a drop-in night and we can bring all the services that are involved in the recovery field at our center at one place once a month and people can all come and get the resources they need. So there's a lot of options we can do, but that's basically what it is. And like she said, December 1st is going to be the day. I'm excited for it. We're right in the Kenyon's parking lot with the N building. It's the Falmouth Recovery Center, but that name will change because how we do it, it's called a peer participatory process. So like I said, the members, you know, come up with everything. They'll come in, they'll start coming up with names and they'll pitch their names and that's how the name of the center gets picked by the members that come. The mission statement will get written by the members, us as staff and all of us together. So it's a work in progress between all of us.
Interesting.
Great.
And that's all we got. Thank you for having me.
And here is your proclamation. Good luck.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work. Okay, we will move on to recognitions. Any recognitions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. If I could, I'd like to recognize the town staff for their work at town meeting. I mean, Mr. Renshaw gave a nice description of our financial outlook and whether or not we want to have a lot of services and mentioned we may have to increase taxes if we do. Pretty good start. And Mr. Johnson-Staub was prepared of a report of his own. Amy Lovell did a great job with the sewer planning, every bit of information you could want. And Peter McConaty backed that up with some strong comments of his own. I mean, everybody represented all their different issues was really on target. So I really appreciate that.
Well, any other announcements?
Just, I had the pleasure of being at the FCTV block party celebrating the 30th anniversary on Saturday. And I think we should recognize all the wonderful work that FCTV does. Thirty years is quite a long time and just was glad to be there. Unfortunately, the weather was not cooperating, but they had a good turnout.
Great. This Scott Price?
I just want to echo, Mr. Brown said that I think town meeting went incredibly well. I also would like to say, you know, Mike's been here for a couple of months now and I think he's doing a great job with managing everything. I think his presentation went really well at town meeting, so wanted to recognize the work that he's been doing since he's been here. And then I also wanted to also note that today is Transgender Day of Remembrance, a day to honor and remember those whose lives were cut short through anti-transgender violence and suicide, November 20th.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one announcement, and that's a change in the agenda. We were notified that the Veterans Council Committee will not, they will not be doing a report tonight, so we just, we will strike that. We have rescheduled them, I believe, for December 18th.
And Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to respectfully request that Select Board pull item 2D, which is titled approved from the consent agenda. It's titled, "Approve Fourth Amendment and Extension of Existing Parking Lot Lease Agreement with the Steamship Authority." By pulling the item tonight, it's going to allow me some additional time to work with town council to address some remaining issues.
Okay, so we will take that off the consent agenda unless anybody in the board wants to challenge that?
No.
Moving it from the agenda? Okay, great.
One announcement.
Go right ahead.
Every year, the East Falmouth Village Association puts up a Santa display and Smitty's ice cream, nice enough for us. Smitty always lets us have a little free parking over there. But this year, we're going to go a little bit bigger. We've got a lot of people helping us, younger folks now that are involved with the village association, it's kind of getting a resurgence. So on the 9th, we're going to have a tree lighting. Smitty's authorized us to plant a Christmas tree out front near the sign where we put the Santa display. So we'll have a Christmas tree lighting, we're going to have hot chocolate, and there might be Santa running around there, so.
Is it going to be you?
It's going to be, no, it won't be me.
What's the date on that, Mr. Brown?
Saturday, December 9th. Starting at, I think, 1 o'clock, we said, 1 to 4 is the official time.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the board? Okay, we'll move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. And since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board cannot participate in any debate of your issue. Anyone here for public comment? Yes. I'll take you next. Go ahead, Mr. Dubey.
Excuse me, Richard Dubey, Blacksmith Chapel Road. This, what I'm about to read you is from the May 27th, '22, Falmouth Enterprise. The Select Board this week approved a new policy that dictates how the town can get rid of used police department firearms. A new policy which was approved Monday, May 23rd, states that the old firearms can either be destroyed or legally and properly sold. Acting Town Manager Peter Johnson-Staub and Town Council Mauro O'Keefe have consulted with the State Inspector General's Office regarding Chapter 30B, which regulates public procurement. They have determined that firearms are a unique item in the proverbial marketplace. Other procurements such as office supplies must first be defined as surplus by the town manager, who will determine the value and dispose of them at the least cost. The firearms, on the other hand, must be disposed of in accordance with public policy defined by the local authority. In this case, the authority is the Select Board. So we just got new shotguns. The used shotguns were traded in. Did the board approve that trade-in in special session or executive session? I didn't hear it in public session, so I'm wondering what happened to this policy? Why wasn't employed for this particular transaction? Was the new town manager ever made aware of the fact that it is his responsibility to enforce the policy that you all voted on unanimously with the exception, of course, of Mr. Mascali, because I don't think he was here serving yet? So I guess I'm just wondering what happened? And has town manager been made aware of this policy? Because right now, it seems as if the policy was simply ignored. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Miranda Vogt. I work at MBL in Woods Hole. I just wanted to continue to urge and thank the Select Board for making the housing crisis an urgent priority. I used to live in Pecasset with four roommates, but as of this December, I'll be living in Falmouth again with only one roommate, which is very exciting. But it did take months of searching every day to find a rental unit or even get a promising lead on a rental unit. And ultimately, many people are in my situation. The only reason we can afford to live here at all is because someone sort of takes pity on us and decides to rent their property for less than they could be getting at market rate. I'll be paying still a significant source of my income to live in Falmouth, but I really want to be a part of the community that I live and that I contribute my work into. I can't afford to save for a house or even for a used car because of the skyrocketing rental prices here. And it does make it hard to envision living in Falmouth past two or three years, which does contribute to a really high turnover for the businesses and for the town. And a community is made up of the people who live here and who work here and who have a vested interest in it. And so I think it is beneficial to our community just overall to have people who work here, live here for more than just a couple of years. Year-round rental units will support your community in numerous ways, and this is just a very important issue, and I want to thank you for your continued support and work on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Todd Taylor.
Thank you. My name's Todd Taylor from West Falmouth, and I just wanted to speak for a few minutes. Appreciate the time. On October 16th, 2023, the Select Board voted 5 to 0 to support Chair Taylor's language change to the strategic plan to commit to staffing the West Falmouth Fire Station. Yet here we are today, a month later, and the West Falmouth Fire Station has been closed several times since then. When is the shuttering of the West Falmouth Fire Station going to stop? There seems to be a problem with communication between the Select Board, the town manager, and the fire chief, as this policy is not being adhered to. It's been almost four years of these discussions and commitments that aren't being resolved. Again, you are elected officials that have a policy that is not being listened to. When is it going to stop? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other public comment? Mr. Fenneren?
Mark Fenneren, 98 grand. I don't share Mr. Brown's zeal for town meeting. I think in particular, one article lacked robust debate, and I think it's, there's no doubt that Malcolm Donald was denied his chance to speak. And through that, I was actually denied mine. I fully intended to bring some things forward and actually ask questions as well. But the one thing I'd like to bring forward is something that I've recently learned that exists in the sewered areas. I was, I received a call from a friend of mine asking me to, if I'd go speak to a woman who'd been dealing with an issue, trying to deal through the town and been getting nowhere. She lives in Falmouth Heights and I went over to her house and visited and her issue is, since the sewer has been installed, her cellar floods all the time now. She had to spend $40,000 for her busy dog to come in and dig all the way around the inside of her foundation and install five sump pumps to keep this water out. When I went over and looked at it, it struck me that I was on a visit with the ZBA in a similar location, distance from the ocean on the other side of the peninsula, and I noticed a hose, pipe, coming out of a house which was obviously hitched to a sump pump. Then I started looking around and towards the end of Maravista, there are numerous of these. I saw one across the street and I went to spoke to the, and spoke to the woman, and she too had no problems with water in her cellar until the sewer was installed. If you think about it, you're taking this area that was, for the most part, a real hard-panned surface that hasn't been touched since the glacier left town 18,000 years ago. You're digging it up, filling it full of crushed stone, and you're in fact creating a vessel to hold water and a conduit to ship it off into people's basements. I then called Jim Grady at Highway and he was, had spoken to the woman that spoke to me and.
Mr. Fenneren, you're going to need to wrap it up.
Yeah, well, if you go look around town, you can see where the original sewer went in, these houses like on Walker Street pumping out water. They are in fact everywhere where you install the sewer. I wanted to ask two questions of Amy at town meeting. First off, what have you done about this? And the answer to that is nothing. And my second question would be, what do you plan on doing about it before you go and install sewer further, perhaps in a different geology, causing greater damage? And like I said before, you go poking holes in the hull of the ship of Falmouth, I think this problem should be looked into. And I think that falls in your lap or the town manager's lap. But it's definitely happening out there and it's getting worse. There's no doubt about that, and that's probably from the fines shifting back and forth. And then, sorry, another few seconds. I was thinking.
I can't give you any more time.
Yeah, well, perhaps this is, can be, is attributing to the problem at the police station as well, if in fact, you know. But it's definitely happening and it definitely should be looked at. I mean, $40,000 is a lot of money for somebody to spend after they spent untold whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Fenneren. Okay, we're going to move into public hearings. We have a shade tree hearing on application of James Clark for the removal of one Norway maple tree at 78 Silver Beach Ave, North Falmouth. Mr. Zalinski, please read the notice of hearing.
In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87, Sections 3 and 4, a public hearing will be held on Monday, November 20th, at 6:45 PM in the Selectman's Office at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. to consider the removal of the following public trees. Location, 78 Silver Beach Ave, removal of one Norway maple, size DBH 31 inch. Reason, past storm breaks and trees proximity to house and wires. Trees identified above have been posted for public inspection. Any objections to their removal must be submitted in writing to the tree warding, tree warden prior to or during the hearing. The mailing address for the tree warden is Department of Public Works, Town of Falmouth, 416 Gifford Street, Falmouth, Mass. 02540. Email, all small case letters, jeremiah.piercyn@falmouthmass.gov. Phone number, 508-457-2543, extension 3008.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll give a brief background summary. The applicant, Mr. James Clark, submitted the attached application for hearing and removal of town shade tree back on October 27th. In his application, the applicant stated that falling branches are creating a hazardous condition on his property. The town tree warden, who's with us this evening, inspected the tree and observed that it had, has a very unbalanced crown from previous utility line clearance, but in overall, he found it to be in fair health. However, due to the fact that the tree is positioned very close to the applicant's house and utility lines, and that the tree has experienced past damage and was responsible for, what I understand was a large power outage back in 2021, the tree warden is recommending that the Select Board allow this particular tree to be removed. Removal should be done at the expense of either the homeowner or Eversource. And if Mr. Pearson has any additional information? Or if there's any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening, Jeremiah Pearson. Yeah, I don't have much more to add, but the tree's a very large maple tree. It's, it is unbalanced, so all the weight is on the house side. It's in an area that traditionally gets quite a bit of wind, and we've had pass breaks in the past. And if something were to fail on the tree, it would be pretty devastating to the homeowner because it would, you know, it would fall right on his house. It's situated, I don't know if you can see on that opinion letter, it's situated in an area we call the vicious V. It's got several sets of lines that run through it. So if something were to happen, it would take down utility poles, knock out power for the whole entire neighborhood, and probably do something to his house, damaging.
Questions from the board. Mr. Mascali?
So I mean, the problem stems from the way Eversource has cleared the lines. Is this an ongoing problem? Does Eversource acknowledge?
Yes, actually, Eversource has acknowledged the removal of the tree. But it, that's everywhere. But this tree happens because of its size and where it is, is more of a problem. It gives it more prominence to failure because of where it's located. But yeah, that's traditional with a lot of trees that Eversource trim, it gets unbalanced.
And when that happens, they, do they?
Yeah, they're more likely to get a wind load and fail.
Mr. Zalinski?
So for the record, Jeremiah, it presents a public safety issue.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Questions or comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
The report seems clear. I think the tree needs to go, and I would move approval of the removal of this maple tree.
Okay, and if you would.
Oh, excuse me?
Yes.
Motion to grant permission to remove the tree with the condition that the cost of removal be borne by the owner or by Eversource.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into business. We're going to discuss interaction between the Select Board and the Falmouth Housing Authority. And this question came up, and the question that was presented to the town manager and town council was, what level of oversight or authority over the Falmouth Housing Authority does the Select Board have? Causing a ruckus, Mr. Netto?
Course.
So I will turn it over to town council.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to give you a brief overview of this relationship, and it can be a little confusing. These semi-autonomous municipal, municipal organizations are all created by statute and they have differing levels of interaction and responsibility with the town. So for the Housing Authority, it is its own political corporate body. So while it is a municipal organization, it is independent of the town. That means that it is responsible for its own finances, for its own staffing. It is responsible for its own mission, which is to create, operate, finance, and maintain low-rent housing for the, for the town. But it does so almost completely independently of the municipality, under the supervision of the state. So while it operates without any oversight from this body or from the town, it is subject to the authority of DHCD, which is now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. EO HLC has the final word on the whole mandate of the Housing Authority. So it supervises every aspect of everything that the Falmouth Housing Authority does and has to sign off on everything that it does. There are two important aspects, however, of the operation of any housing authority in the state with its municipality. And there are two things that this Select Board does that is very important as far as the Housing Authority goes. It makes appointments when there's a vacancy, which the Select Board is just about to do. And also, it has the power, interestingly enough, to remove any of the elected members of the Falmouth Housing Authority or the tenant member that's appointed by the Select Board. The Housing Authority has five members, and the fifth member is appointed by the state. So this board doesn't have authority to remove that member, but the state does. So if this board receives complaints, this, the Select Board has the authority to hear the complaint, to conduct some kind of inquiry into the validity of the complaint, and to take action upon that, which can include a hearing and a decision to. take action upon that, which can include a hearing and a decision to remove the member if the member's found to, to have some sort of impropriety, like neglect of duty or misconduct in office. So that's how that works, and I'm happy to entertain questions.
I think one of the reasons that it came to me was there was just a question around, they can come to the Select Board for money.
Yes.
And we have given them money. And so that was kind of what got me thinking about, okay, but it's town money, they are independent, and they do their own, they run independently and all that, but taxpayer money does go into it. And I think that was part of the reason, one of the, one of the reasons the question came up.
It's a, it's a unique aspect of that relationship. And it's, again, it's by statute, so the legislature recognized that, that low-income housing is, is important for any government entity to support and to try to maintain. And housing authorities across the Commonwealth sometimes do need financial assistance. And so the legislature specifically allows the Select Board, and it, and the Select Board does, award grants, or there's often a special relationship between housing authorities and their municipalities in terms of conveying land back and forth, or leasing land back and forth.
Questions? Mr. Zelinski?
Because the Select Board has responsibility of making appointments, my question is, how is the housing authority protected by means of liability? Do they have their own, do they take care of their own legal issues? Or do we have any implications to that because we make these appointments?
No, the, the appointments for vacancies are done strictly by statute, and then, once that appointment for a vacancy is made, then those, those officers mostly are elected by the voters. But that aspect, the legal aspect of a housing authority, that is completely independent from the municipality. So housing authorities have the ability to sue and be sued, to enter into contracts on their own. They are independently subject to thirty B and the procurement laws. They are able to retain and should retain their own attorneys. I don't have any ability to provide them with legal advice at all. And they, they are required to have their own insurance. They are responsible for their own liabilities, without any liability to the town for anything that happens on the housing authority property.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Mr. Brown, and then we'll go to Mr. Muscally.
My question would be more of, how can we interact successfully with them and try to help facilitate their needs? Because I, I've heard, but I don't really know, that they have a lot of units that are down due to, you know, need for renovation and so forth. But I'd like to know if we can invite them to talk about it and maybe find some ways that we can partner with them and help them in their mission. Because, I mean, I think that's more important than worrying about how we can oversee them. I think we should partner with them.
I think that's an interesting question. And to that point, because of the unique financial relationship where, where the Select Board does have control of the purse strings and does provide grant money and certain financial awards, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask how that money's being spent and to have there be some level of accountability. I think it's absolutely appropriate to have an open line of communication between this board and the Falmouth Housing Executive Director and the board to figure out where the money's going and how that money's being spent.
Thank you. Mr. Muscally?
No, just, you know, I've had the pleasure until very recently of being a member of the, of the Falmouth Housing Authority, and I just wanted to point out that it is that relationship with the state which sometimes causes some of the practical problems that the housing authority encounters on a day-to-day basis, and in particular, to Mr. Brown's comment about vacancies and how quickly they can be brought back and put online. There's delays that are inherent in the relationship between the state and the housing authority. So sometimes, it's, many times, it's not just the housing authorities dropping the ball or not doing what they're supposed to be doing, but the, the interaction with the state that causes a lot of the delays.
And if I could, I think that's an opportunity for us to intervene and send letters to our delegates and advocate for a faster turnaround service, you know? If there's some kind of systemic problem that we can advocate for fixing, I'd like to do it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into our, the, a report from the Agricultural Commission.
Good evening. Stan Ingram, one oh-four Comanche Drive. I am the current chair of the Agricultural Commission, so here for the yearly update. Let's see. Well, we continue to strive to represent the interests of the agricultural community at the municipal level. That's what we see as our, our goal or our mission. This past year, we worked closely with stable owners and the Board of Health to come up with their revised stable regulations, which I think in the end sort of pleased or worked in the favor of both the Board of Health and the stable owners. Took a little bit of doing, but, and back and forth, but in the end, I think everyone was pretty happy with what, what happened. For the future, that was our main work for this past year. We are currently working on a couple of projects. One is trying to figure out how the Ag Commission can get the, or inform the public better about our right to farm, which the town approved at town meeting some years ago. This is, Falmouth is a right-to-farm town, and how do we get that information out to especially people who are moving into town and like the rural aspect, but may not fully understand what that entails? And so we're exploring what it would take to get a few signs posted at the main road into town. Other towns have these little plaques that say right-to-farm, and that's what we're looking at. The other thing we're exploring is coming up with a, sort of like a trifold information sheet, which would have a lot of the things that pertain to agriculture in the town, farmer's market, local sources of seed and farm supplies, some of the farm regulations concerning like chickens and other, other things, and just put that into a little trifold that would be available at places throughout the town. So we're working on a draft of that, and then we will probably come back to the Select Board at some point and ask for some money, get it printed up. And we're also, we still have permission to work on the cranberry bog at, on West Thompson and also the one in Flax Pond. And we hope to get on the bog sometime this winter, early next spring, do some clearing. When I went to look for cranberries this, just this past month, there was nothing there, and I think that was probably due to the hard frost we had early in the spring just knocked out all the blossoms. But the end goal is to try to make it not a commercially viable bog, but at least a bog where townspeople could go and pick a quarter cranberries on their own, and just to keep that aspect of Falmouth's farming history intact. We're also looking, there's an initiative from the USDA NRCS, which is, I think, Natural Resource Conservation Service, which is part of the USDA to identify farmland soils of local importance. So we hope to come up with a map. And all that does basically is it identifies good farmland, and if some entity, say the three-hundred committee or, or the town wanted to purchase, look at a parcel and purchase it, this would just add a little bit of, you know, whatever, little thing that they could go, oh, this is, you know, has farmland of significant or local importance, help get a little grant money. So those are our ongoing projects. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Muscally?
Just, could you explain the right to farm, what, what that actually entails or allows?
Well, I wasn't here in Falmouth or on the Ag Commission when that got passed, so I cannot fully, I can tell you what it means to me. It means that, you know, I have the right to, to farm. If I had five acres of land, then I could do, basically start a farm on it. It also means that, you know, it, it's okay with the Board of Health that somebody could have backyard chickens, and no matter what their neighbors may think of them, as long as it's not a health risk, then it's okay. And people could have a vegetable garden in their backyard and not be cited for it.
But is it a commercial, a commercial component?
No, it's not.
It's not a commercial component to it?
You're asking questions that I cannot answer.
Thank you.
I'll get that information for you.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Stan. I attended an event at Tony Andrews Farm last year, and there was a couple of younger folks that I believe were on the Agricultural Commission. And they were explaining to me how some of these town-owned vacant lots that are not really buildable could make great little community gardens, and that they seemed really motivated. And they were explaining to me how you grow like tiers of racks of vegetables and how you can have this huge production on little tiny lots, and I was pretty excited about it, and I'm just curious if that's still on the radar.
I'm not sure they were from, from the Ag Commission or Farming Falmouth, maybe one of those.
Okay, maybe, yeah.
But, yes, those, those are out there. They actually do it in containers. Not my type of farming, but it's done.
Okay.
But we're still, still always have our eyes open for expanding the community gardens in the town.
Okay, thank you.
Do thank you for the town's support in getting the one at Peterson Farm off the planning board, off the planning table and actually almost ready to go.
Yeah.
Do you, as a board member, find it difficult finding properties or, or young farmers finding properties because of the fact that these, these contractors are, they're sucking up all this A G A property and then turn it into commu-
Forty Bs?
Commercial real estate. Pardon?
You mean forty Bs?
I, I didn't say that.
Oh, no.
But I'm a big proponent of, of saving our agricultural resources, and I just didn't know how, or if you guys had any discussion on how that affects you and the other farmers?
Yes, it does. I mean, the whole, that whole economic system affects. You know, if you think about how much it costs to buy land in Falmouth and, you know, there aren't many crops, if any, that you could grow to, to turn that, you know, to make it a viable operation. So more land that we can get and make it, not have that pressure of a mortgage or a land thing, the better off.
I guess what I'm asking is because of that use, it's making it more advantageous for them to use it that way and less advantageous with respect to pricing for you guys, is that right? It makes it more expensive for you to purchase those pieces of property because there's other uses?
Usually, usually, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your update.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the report from the Waterways Committee.
Ladies and folks, on behalf of the Waterways Committee, that's comprised of Kevin King, the vice chairman, he's here, and Rocky Guy, who's here also, Mike Kenny, Chuck Eastman, Rick Hill, Chuck Martinson, he's on the, on the committee as well, and the non-voting member of Harbor Master. I thank you for the opportunity to present this summary of what we've worked on for the past year. And before I go into that, I just really want to point out the asset the, the town of Falmouth has in our Harbor Master. His professionalism and his knowledge, his experience, and his expertise is just incredible. Having been on the Waterways for a number of years, he just keeps surprising me with his knowledge and his ability to recall a lot of different things. So with that said, we'll move on. But Falmouth is, is very fortunate in that we have twenty estuaries that dump into the Atlantic Ocean, twenty, starting from the northwest corner of McGansett all the way to Wacoit Bay. But with those big assets, we also have a lot of responsibility in trying to maintain those estuaries for a lot of different reasons. So starting with the northwest corner of McGansett Harbor, excuse me, we've spent a great amount of time on this particular estuary because of a lot of complicated factors that are involved in that piece of property, not the least of which is the fact that there's three real components of that area. One is the entrance into the harbor, the harbor itself, and then there's a connecting river that goes up to Squatig Harbor. And the complicated part of that is that part of each one of these areas is in the town of Bourne. So there's a line that goes right through it. And last year's presentation, I believe Jeff Thomas might have had a map that showed how the, the line of demarcation between Falmouth and Bourne goes through these three areas. So it makes it a real challenging project to try to solve the problems going through The Waterways Committee met several times over the past year with the McGansett-Squatig Association. That's an association of residents in the area that have formed to try to help and move forward to make the Waterways a more usable, user-friendly piece of harbor. Following several of these meetings, it became evident that it was a little bit beyond the scope of the Waterways Committee to try to deal with this. So a meeting was set up with the manager and the assistant manager, the town manager, town assistant manager, and the McGansett-Squatig Association. And at that meeting, it was decided that they would develop a memorandum of understanding. And basically, what the memorandum did was outline who would seek and pay for design of engineering and permitting of the projects that were necessary to be dredged there. But that the important part from the towns, from the town of Falmouth's point of view was that the permits would be in the town's name. And I think the, the town council probably advised on that issue that it would be in the town of Falmouth's name, any permits that were taken out. So moving on, the Woods Hole Group conducted an extensive steer, survey of the approach that's going into the harbor, and submitted their findings in a January twenty-three report that highlights removing about two or three thousand cubic yards of, of material. of material to make a depth of eight feet that mean low water over 1.8 acres of land. The critical component of getting this material out of there is what do you do with it? And that's a very difficult question. The report that was generated by the Woods Hole Group stated that it was beach-renewal-ishment compatible. The unfortunate part was that McGan's would not allow, for whatever the reason, the beach committee or somebody said, no, you can't put that on McGan's Beach. So it's still up in the air. We're waiting for reports from the Woods Hole Group of what to really do with any of the material that you dredge out of there. So there's no sense dredging anything until that time. And as I said earlier, most of the approach is in the Bourne, Town of Bourne. And we're working with the Town of Bourne to try to create an intergovernmental agreement of you'll do this much and we'll do this much. And who do the permits go? And it gets really complicated, way above my pay grade. But we're working on it. And it's going to be part of the 10-year comprehensive permit. And I'll explain that a little bit later on down the road here, a little bit. So we still haven't decided whether it's going to be filed jointly or individually. So that's kind of an update of McGan's. It's complicated, that's for sure. Moving on down Buzzers Bay to Wild Harbor, what we did there was we installed a new float system that was designed, permitted, and installed in the south bulkhead of Wild Harbor, along with a ramp coming down from the street to provide easy access to the float. And this was really a huge welcome upgrade to the benefit of the many boats in that harbor. Most of the boats in that harbor are really kind of small. The next project we get involved in further down Buzzers Bay was West Falmouth Harbor. And this was just recently completed, the second week of October. The boat-launching ramp that was installed many decades ago, I think, that was all torn out. A new ramp was designed, permitted, and installed, and it's completed. And now the tech school, Cape Cod, Upper Cape Regional, is building floats, and they'll be installed in the spring, similar to the floats that were installed in Harrington Street, West Falmouth. Then we move to Woods Hole. Woods Hole, the committee requested funding for a new ramp in the November 23 capital budget. I'm not sure how that went. So that's in the process, in the works, to put a new ramp in at Woods Hole. Moving down along the south coast, there's several water-quality estuaries, i.e. Trunk River, Fresh Pond, Salt Pond, Little Pond. Those are really not navigable waterways, but they have to do with water quality. So the water has to go in and out of those, their tidal areas. And they're periodically dredged. But they're on hold as well because of the 10-year comprehensive permit is not, has not been completed at this point. Those areas get dredged usually with a piece of equipment that the Waterways Committee rents from Plymouth County. It's a big backhoe. It's got a 70-foot reach, so it can go in. It could sit on the shore, pick up the product, and remove it and dispose of it in an appropriate way. So that, again, is waiting. We can't do anything there without the comprehensive permit. Moving down the coast a little bit to Falmouth Harbor, there were four separate projects that were addressed there. The first one was the entrance channel was dredged under the old permit that expired in December of 2022. But that was done. The spoils that were dredged out of there were beach-renewal-replenishable. It was piped down to Surf Drive and put on the beach to replenish the beach sand there. The second project that's underway at Falmouth Harbor is Simpson's Landing Bulkhead that's being rebuilt. And it's in the process of, in the final process of permitting. And a grant for construction has been filed with the Seaport Economic Council in September. The third project that was completed in the Falmouth Inner Harbor, where new floats were installed where the charter boats tie up. And the fourth project that's in the beginning stages, the town electrician notified us that the pedestals that carry the electricity to the docks and to the floats have to be upgraded with GFI outlets. So this has gone in front of the, in the budget, gone into a line item on the budget for the 2024 budget. It's pretty hefty money. It's somewhere around $40,000 or something like that to upgrade these pedestals so that people can plug into them safely. So those are the four projects that are underway or have been completed in Falmouth Inner Harbor. Moving down the coast to Great Pond and Green Pond, both of these estuaries are in need of dredging. But due to the fact that the 10-year permit hasn't been completed yet, and I'll talk about that in a minute, we can't do anything there. They both need to be dredged to provide adequate water for people to boat in and out of there. And the problem now is that we think the permit's going to be issued before the end of this month of November. But then the time-of-year restriction comes in January 15, where you can't dredge. So there's only a short window. And we're not sure what's going to happen, whether we're going to be able to do that. To complicate the matter a little bit further, the area that needs to be dredged in Great Pond is just north of the bridge. It's filled in there. In order to dredge that, the dredge has to come to the Falmouth, be disassembled, go under the bridge, be reassembled and dredged, and then taken apart again and brought back out again. So it's a complicated process. I guess now we move down to Eel River. And this is another complicated project, similar to McGan's. It's, we've spent a lot of time talking about this because there's a lot of different issues that have surfaced with Eel River. And in June of 2022, the engineering firm, SCS, submitted a 72-page feasibility study and report outlining the history and the many issues that had to do with this estuary. They listed four alternatives. The first alternative is no action, but there's a combination of all kinds of problems there with coastal erosion, increased public hazard risk related to navigational safety, and the likely degradation of estuary water quality, indicating do nothing is not a real viable option. And the second option they outlined was to dredge the existing channel. At present, the town is waiting for the 10-year comprehensive. That allows dredging as needed. Since this alternative would not meet the goals of the project by mitigating erosion in the western shoreline, it also requires frequent maintenance dredging. This alternative was eliminated for further consideration. The approach, this approach of dredging this area has been used in the past. You dredge it for 15, 20, $30,000, and the next storm comes along and fills back in and you're back to where you started. So that really is not a good option either. And the third option is the shortening of Washburn Island Spit. The additional, in addition to the dredging of the channel to specified specs dredging, the western tip of Washburn Island Spit will create a wider tidal inlet to increase the efficiency and the tidal currents away from the shoreline of the inlet. By far, this is the most viable option. This option will require an extension, extensive and costly permitting process and likely will require a CZM coastal residency grant in application in 2024. The fourth option, which talks about hard structures, sands, jetties, that type of stuff, the chances of that happening are remote. So that's not really a viable option. So the unanimous opinion in the Waterways Committee was that no action was not an option. Major waterway concerns was the safety of the large number of boaters going in and out of this channel. The very high velocity in excess of sick knots and sometimes flowing between the Manantiar Club and the Washburn Island Spit really created a hazard. Anybody that's a boater would really relate to this. So after much discussion with the Waterways Committee, we chose to seek guidance from the Falmouth Conservation Commission. Once the Conservation Commission met and heard all the facts, they voted unanimously to support the removal of 300 feet of the Washburn Island Spit. Consequently, at the meeting of the Waterways Committee on November 1, we voted to recommend to the town to proceed with the filing of a CZM grant for engineering and permitting funding for this purpose. The application would be filed in May of '24. A 25% town matching and fund will be required and likely will be in the November 2024 capital budget. There was a feasibility study and you should have had a copy of that in the packet. Moving to Wacoit Bay, this estuary has also concerned a lot of time with engineering and permitting. And a big problem that we came up with here is what to do, how to deal with the spoils. The spoils are the stuff that you're taking out of the water. And a limited contract has been given to the Woods Hole Group to identify options of what to do with the dredged spoils. And once we get this, then we'll decide how cost-effective we should be looking at engineering and permitting for the project. Another project that's not related to the water, but is indirectly, is White's Landing. It's a parking lot on Route 28. That project is underway. It started, it's funded. They're starting with mitigation of the stormwater runoff along with regrading the lot, the entire lot. And ultimately, in the spring, it'll be paved and lined to maximize parking for all of its uses. Another project that the Waterways Committee got involved in was to develop a priority list. And the members worked on this for quite a while to try to prioritize the different estuaries as to their needs and when they should be dredged. And some of the criteria that was considered in developing this priority list was the number of boaters that were impacted, the navigation, the water quality. They may be already permitted. The feasibility of getting permits, number of docks. So there was a lot of areas that we looked at so that we created this priority list. And the priority list really is a guideline for the Waterways Committee to try to determine, prioritize dredging requests.
You're over your time. Is there, can you start to? Oh, don't go anywhere. You have to take questions from the board. I let you off the hook. Questions from the board or comments from the board?
I'm interested to know the progress of the 10-year permit.
Updated this morning. It's cleared the Army Corps. It's in NOAA's hands. NOAA's has, people at NOAA have approved it, and they're waiting for somebody up here to sign it.
Getting close.
And it may be by the end of this week. But it's Thanksgiving week, and I'm not sure that's going to happen. So I would think, you know, by December 1. But then again, you get the time-of-year restriction. We're limited on.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much. And thank you for the information in our packet.
Yeah, very thorough report.
Okay, we're going to move on to application for change of manager of an all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license, Rose M Corp., doing business as Sopranos Casino by the Sea, located at 286 Grand Ave in Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anthony is here. On behalf of the applicant, I'll just turn it over to him, if you don't mind, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you.
Yes, good evening, members of the board and Madam Chair. My name's Anthony Sokolos, for the record. I'm an attorney at Amen Clower LLP. And I'm here representing Rose M Corp., which is the owner of Sopranos Casino by the Sea, and John T. Richardi, who's here in his individual capacity as well. And we're seeking approval of the application for change of manager of record regarding the liquor license at Sopranos Casino by the Sea. The current liquor license manager of record is Edmund M. Richardi Jr., who's John's father and who's the president and owner of Rose M Corp., amongst other things. It's noteworthy for me to mention that Mr. Edmund Richardi has been the owner of Soprano's Restaurante in Mashpee for the better part of two decades, as I understand it, and has owned Sopranos Casino by the Sea here in Falmouth since, I believe, 2017. Edmund would like to transfer the liquor license at the Casino by the Sea to his son, John, because he wants John to assume a greater degree of leadership at the restaurant and because he wants to provide for continuity and management by his family at the restaurant. And Mr. Edmund Richardi is obviously a very experienced restaurateur. It's important to note that he trusts his son completely to carry out all the responsibilities that come with being the liquor license manager for the restaurant. Mr. John Richardi is currently the assistant operational manager at Sopranos Casino by the Sea, and he's been serving in this role since 2019. He generally works there six days a week. Sometimes he's there every single day of the week. Mr. Richardi understands that being the liquor license manager means that he'll be the responsible party at the establishment, and that counts even when he's not physically present at the restaurant. And he pledges to hold himself and all of his employees to the same high standards that the town and the ABCC require of a liquor license manager. Mr. Richardi's been involved in his father's restaurant since at least 2016 and has essentially grown up in his father's businesses. And he lives the full day-to-day operation of the restaurant on a daily basis. And that's really just about it. I mean, everything else is in the application. We've also submitted to the board a letter in support of this change of manager application by Rodney Collins, who's a former police chief of the Town of Mashpee as well.
Questions from the board on this application?
No questions. I thought it was very complete application.
Okay.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the application for a change of manager of an all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for Rose M Corp., doing business as Sopranos Casino by the Sea, located at 286 Grand Ave, Falmouth, as presented.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Excellent.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay, we will move into designate member of the select board to seek input on the request to dedicate the beach side of the Manant Bridge to Bruce Magardo. And is there anyone on the board who would like to volunteer?
I would, Madam Chair.
Mr. Muscally?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd motion to designate Mr. Muscally to seek input from the beach committee on the request to dedicate the beach side of Manant Bridge to Bruce G. Magardo.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there anything you wanted to add? Mr. Renshaw, I'm sorry, I skipped right over.
No, it's fine, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Bob.
So you will?
Thanks, Bob.
You will go and do that. Mr. Muscally?
This will be my first one.
Have fun.
That was involved with that.
Okay. Number seven, approve annual licenses for 2024. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can see, as part of your packets, you have the applications and checklists. All of the required documentations and payments were sent to all the licensees. And all of those materials, I wanted to point out to the board, have been returned back. The below-listed licensees have submitted all the renewal requirements. And Madam Chair, if you would allow me to read off by category. There's several categories tonight. A little bit lengthier list than we had the last time. And I'll start with the all-alcohol restaurant and common victualer license. And I'll read each business by name and address. And then I would ask the select board to vote to approve those licenses.
You want to vote them by category?
If you don't mind.
Nope, go ahead.
I'll be quick through it.
Certainly.
So again, all-alcohol restaurant and common victualer license, 99 Restaurant and Pub, 30 Davis Straits, Captain 30 Davis Straits, Captain Kidd., 77 Water Street, Restaurante Avellino., 339 East Falmouth Highway, and that would complete that category.
I move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Second category is all-alcohol package store license. List of the businesses, Falmouth Wine and Spirits, 322 Palmer Avenue, John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Cappy's Fine Wine and Spirits, 21 Spring Bars Road, North Falmouth Liquors, 362 North Falmouth Highway, and lastly, T-Ticket Market Incorporated, 125 T-Ticket Highway.
Move approval?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm on a roll.
You in favor?
Did you vote on that? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You approved. Okay, thank you.
Wine and malt package store license, Garrett's Family Market, 4335 Palmer Avenue, Holly Park Variety Incorporated, 580 A, Route 28 A, Enter Gas., 607 Main Street, and lastly, Wild Harbor General Store, 200 Old Main Road.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Next category is common victualer license, Betsy's Diner., 457 Main Street, Kuna Messett Farm., 277 Hatchville Road, and Talk of the Town Diner., 362 North Falmouth Highway.
Move approval?
Again, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Next category is inholder license, Admiral TN., 51 T-Ticket Highway, and Falmouth N., 824 Main Street.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Next category is entertainment license, Captain Kidd., 77 Water Street, Kuna Messett Farm., 277 Hatchville Road, and West Falmouth Library., 575 West Falmouth Highway.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Next category is Sunday entertainment license, Captain Kidd., 77 Water Street, Kuna Messett Farm., 277 Hatchville Road, and West Falmouth Library., 575 West Falmouth Highway.
I have a question about this one.
Yes, please.
Have there been any complaints or concerns about this Sunday entertainment license from these businesses?
I've not been advised of any complaints.
Okay. Thank you, I move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
And lastly, used car dealer license, motor vehicle class 1, 2, and 3, Costas Auto Body., 222 Carriage Shop Road, Falmouth Auto Works., 151 Worcester Court, Falmouth Motor Car Incorporated., 716 T-Ticket Highway, Falmouth Pier., 3764 Scranton Ave., Falmouth Salvage., 9 Hayway Road, Flying Bridge Marina., 250 Scranton Avenue, Enter Gas Incorporated., 10 North Main Street, O'Hara's Motors., 50 Spring Bars Road, Reenie, apologize for the mispronounced trucking, 9 Hayway Road, Route 28 Auto Center., 550 East Falmouth Highway, Sandy's Auto Sales. 45 Simpson Lane, and lastly, Savon Hatum LLC., 561 Thomas B. Landers Road.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
This is identified as all these, they're different businesses, but they're all identified under one heading, class 1, 2, and 3. Does that mean all of those businesses can sell the 1, 2, and 3 licenses? That looks like a blanket coverage for that. So, now, the way it reads is that a guy that sells boats can also sell cars.
So, the approval is specific to the applications submitted?
Okay, so that, so they're identified by application to what they can sell, what they, this is just.
That's correct.
Coming from the title.
Yes.
Okay.
So, is each, if I could, is each motor vehicle sales license limited to a certain number of vehicles, or is it just standard procedure, whatever you can fit?
They go through ZBA. It's just they're under special permit, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there's a numbers limit. I think the question more pertained to what type of vehicles are being sold, boats versus vehicles, versus automotive vehicles.
Right.
Which have the same name.
Well, I think that's what he's asking.
My question is different. I was just curious if, I guess I should check the ZBA records, how they determine.
Well, I was on the ZBA.
Yeah.
Depending on the site assignment, they issue a license for as many vehicles as they feel like is appropriate and what's applied for, so they're not all the same across the board.
Okay.
So, each, they must know what their limit is, unless there's new ones that haven't been to the zoning board, which I doubt. They're already, that process has already been done. These are just renewals.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, right. So, yeah, so my understanding is what the Select Board's doing is not duplicating what the ZBA did. So, if the ZBA says you're only authorized to sell 12 vehicles, have 12 vehicles on the lot, that is something.
Zoning board is the ZBA.
That's what I'm saying. That would be a decision of the zoning board that appeals, not a Select Board decision.
Right.
Select Board is just saying you have a license.
Right. Okay, very good, thank you.
I move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, we will move into discuss and vote the 2024 Select Board Meeting Calendar. Any questions, comments, or issues with this proposed calendar?
I think there's really only one option to have a meeting in January before the budget is due, the Finance Committee. I guess I only have a question about that, I was just noticing that there's only gonna be one meeting in January before we have to submit that.
On the 12th, because you have new, you're absolutely correct.
Just an observation.
Yeah.
We might take it up at the end of December, though, right? If we need to?
If we are that far along in the process.
If there's anything to talk about.
Yes, yes, that's possible.
Okay.
Any other glaring issues with the calendar?
I guess a logistical question, if we felt we needed another meeting in January before the budget is due, it just needs to be posted 48 hours before?
We can definitely do that if we needed to. Yes.
Thank you.
My only issue is May 2024 on the 6th. I may not be here for that one.
Well, you plan that far ahead.
I try.
It's amazing.
Other than that, do I have a motion to approve the draft calendar for 2024? Does it move?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, we're gonna move into the consent agenda. I will read each one of the items. Please notify me as the chair if you would like to hold any of them. And Mr. Renshaw, at the beginning of our meeting, did pull from administrative orders 2D.
She's lost.
So, I will not be including that. Okay, licenses application for a three-day, for a three-special-one-day-all-alcoholic-beverage license, Falmouth Theatre Guild, Highfield Theater, 58 Highfield Drive, Falmouth, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, December 1 through 3, December 8 through 10, December 15 through 17, 2023. Friday hours, 6:30 to 10:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday hours, 3:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Application for a special one-day-all-alcoholic-beverages license, West Falmouth Christmas Tree Lighting, 575 West Falmouth Highway, Friday, December 1, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Approved request to extend seasonal all-alcoholic common victualer license until January 2nd, 2024, The Landfall Restaurant, 9 Luskum Ave. in Woods Hole. And vote to approve the administrative change of address for an all-alcoholic beverages club license, Falmouth Rod and Gun Club Inc., located at 25 Sportsman Lane.
Madam Chair, I'll declare that I'm a member of that club.
Okay. Administrative orders, authorize Friends of Cedar Lake to file notice of intent NOI with the Conservation Commission to conduct invasive species removal at Cedar Lake. Approved request from 300 Committee for a conservation restriction on the Gerald W. Silver 1.023 acre parcel at Lot 4, Millstone Street in North Falmouth. Approved appointment of Carissa April as the Joe Q. Veteran Coffee Break Representative to the Veterans Council Committee. Accept award under the FY 2024 Municipal Road Safety Grant, MRS, in the amount of $39,950 to use for traffic enforcement.
Madam Chair? Did you skip number D or?
Yes, I announced that Mr. Renshaw, at the very beginning of the meeting, asked to remove 2D from the agenda, and I would not read it.
I have a question.
Madam Chair, move the consent agenda?
Okay, I have a motion to move the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, abstain from the Falmouth Rod and Gun.
Okay.
Other than that, I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with one abstention on 1D.
Or I can second the Rod and Gun.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, and there's one abstention on 1D. Okay, we'll move into review and vote the, approve the minutes of meetings, public session August 28th, November 6th, and November 13th. Everybody have an opportunity to take a look at those?
I don't recall seeing any issues. Oh, well, I wrote the ones on the 30th, so I definitely don't have an issue with those.
Nobody else better.
I know, right?
Okay, so, do I have any motions on the public session, August 28th, November 6th, November 13th?
I move approval of all three of those public session minutes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the public session minutes. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Okay, we will look at the executive session of October 30th, and we should vote to approve and then decide on whether to release or not.
Has this been made public? Has this gone into effect, what we discussed?
Sorry, I'm just.
Mr. Johnson, stop.
I'm waiting for the minutes to load here.
Discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Falmouth Library Association contract renewal.
Yeah, I would ask that those not be released at this time.
Okay.
And I'd move approval and not release for public access.
Second that as well.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve, however, to not
Release.
Release for public application. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, Town Manager supplemental report. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, two very quick updates. The Department of Public Works continues to work closely with Eversource and other stakeholders as we look to add some additional charging stations at various locations throughout town. As you may have noticed, currently, DPW is working to complete the installation of two dual-charging stations, which I'm told is a total of four stations, to the rear of Town Hall for use by town vehicles, town employees and vehicles. The DPW and Sustainability Coordinator are also working diligently to add a two-vehicle charging station in the parking lot of Town Council's office on Locust Street. I think that's being coordinated around the Eversource project. It's gonna go kind of right down the middle of the parking lot of Town Council's office. Those will be available for public use, I understand, as well as new charging stations at Depot Avenue and Peg Noonan Park, which are also planned for public access and use. Lastly, I wanted to provide an update on fencing at Town Green and trim and fascia repair and repainting at Town Hall. Recently requested the DPW Parks Division conduct an inspection and a thorough evaluation of the fencing around Village Green, or Town Green, I'm sorry. As many sections of the fencing are showing pretty significant signs of rot, and the fencing in general needs repainting. Public Works is currently speaking with a local mill concerning the replacement of a dozen or so of the posts that have been rotted. We anticipate the work to begin in mid-April 2024 and quicker, if we can arrange it, depending upon weather, obviously. Going forward, working with Mr. McConerty and Mr. Pearson, the Parks Division will routinely conduct an examination of the fencing and implement a scheduled maintenance and repair cycle on the fencing to maintain the fence in the best possible condition and really extend its life. It's only been a few years, I was told, I think it was Black Locust that was purchased to repair some of the fencing around the green. I think just over time and the weather elements have really deteriorated the condition of those posts, so those are gonna be repaired, and going forward, we're gonna have a better routine maintenance cycle on them. Lastly, DPW and Facilities Maintenance have also been requested to look at this building, the trim and fascia around Town Hall, and develop an action plan for the replacement of the rotted wood fascia boards that are evident, particularly as you walk around the front side of this building. Like the fencing at Town Green, Facilities Maintenance has been directed to develop a long-term scheduled inspection and maintenance program for Town Hall. And a couple of meetings to report, upcoming meetings, December 4th and the 18th, and that is conclusion of my report.
Thank you for looking into the green. I've had a couple of complaints about that, so I appreciate that. All right, we'll go to Select Board reports. Any reports?
No.
No?
Not tonight. I was away for a couple of weeks.
Ah, Mr. Brown?
Well, I attended the municipal light plant board meeting this week, and they had the first presentation from their request for information from potential vendors, and I won't give you the details of what the first vendor proposed, but it was very encouraging and surprisingly, I was very pleased to see the results of it. Anxious to see what the others bring, because we have a few more interested parties that are interested to propose what they might do for Falmouth with regard to providing broadband network. So, I was very, very excited about that one. Beach Committee meeting, business as usual for the Beach Committee, carrying on with their good work. They are trying to figure out how they're gonna get the rest of their beach huts built. It's not clear yet exactly what the process is gonna be, so they're gonna be probably reaching out to us for a little more information and guidance on what we can do to put that together. And there was a meeting in the Mark's Building. They're getting closer to implementing their plans for renovating the exterior, and they have an architect on board now that's working with them, who's gonna fine-tune the wishes of the committee. They've got some important ideas that they want to implement, and the architect seemed to think that they were on the right track from what I saw at the meeting. I wasn't able to stay for the whole thing, but another good job they're doing. We did attend the event at the old Falmouth Nursing Home with Mr. Michael Galasso's project and Ed Augustus, the housing, what's his actual title?
Secretary.
Secretary of Housing.
Yeah.
Housing and livable communities.
That was very interesting to hear him say that Governor is proposing to spend $4 billion on housing in her new housing initiative, so there could be help on the way for funding some of this stuff. So, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Scott, first?
I have a report.
Okay.
I attended the Housing Production Plan Meeting that was at the high school about two weeks ago. Jed and Ken did a great job with the consulting of organizing that. It was a really good turnout, and I think, well, the people that I spoke to said they felt like it was worthwhile, and they were glad that they attended, so that was really good. And then last week, I was on a citizens panel for hiring the new DEI officer, and I was very impressed with the way that was put together by Susan and by Mike and with the candidates who were brought forward.
Awesome.
Good.
Did you guys serve food today?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we served Thanksgiving dinner today at the Senior Center.
Go ahead, Mr. Zelinski.
Thank you.
I, we got the invitation for the Christmas parade from Mr. Kasparian, and mentioned that family members could join us, so I'm happy to announce that my granddaughter Hayden will be marching with me in the Christmas parade this year.
Oh, nice.
Sweet. I just have a couple of things. One is, I really think we need to do a workshop. I hate to bring it up again, maybe in February, because we have a lot of items on our list to get to, and sometimes in our weekly meetings, we don't always get to them, or we're not able to spend as much time on some items as we'd like, and I can certainly develop the agenda for that, but I'm thinking February, so if everybody would be open and willing to take a look at that, we might need to do it Saturday in February.
Yeah, schedule it on a crappy day.
Absolutely, absolutely.